United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's me, Westbury City Council, the order, roll call please.
Crowner?
Here.
Raleigh?
Here.
Hightmeier?
Here.
Lees?
Here.
Waterman?
To perfect and approve the agenda.
Support.
Motion for support, is there any discussion? Roll call.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Hightmeier?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Motion to carry, consent agenda.
Motion to approve is presented.
Support.
Motion for support to approve consent agenda items one through eight, which are amendments from regular city council meeting on April seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, approved training for Angela Moore at the Iowa Municipal Professionals Institute, approved payment to Center State International Trucks, approved payment to Tri-City Blacktop, approved payment to Dryer Painting, approved payment to Lynch Dallas, approved clerk's monthly financial report for March two thousand and nineteen, and approved claims list as presented in the amount of eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty-three cents. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hightmeier?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Motion to carry, staff reports, Dan?
Uh, just a couple of things that I brought up last meeting, um, if you want to attend the small business appreciation breakfast on the tent, let me know. I'm, just, I looked at my calendar, I can't make it this year, but, uh, if anybody wants to go to that, let me know, we'll get you on the list. And secondly, Nancy from Alliant had, uh, emailed us and let us know that they had some money available for RagBri Pass Through Cities, a small little grant to help with expenses, so I applied for that today.
Do I have anything for them? Mike, you're up.
I'm up. Uh, the pool painting?
Welcome, first of all.
Thank you. Pool painting's done, cure time is today, supposed to be cured so water can go in, we're finishing up some plumbing, put water to the bath house and check the rest of that. Icky's moving right along, they've opened up Winter Ballard, and I see they got Swan this afternoon opened up, and even though they rained out on Lefler, they started taking out manholes that need fixed and kept on working today to keep that project going. Um, soon as Mother Nature allows us, we've got a list of trees we're gonna get on, back to cutting down the dead ass trees. About it.
Well, I was glad he mentioned the, um, Mount Pleasant project and all that that's going on, and, as you know, a few months ago, I kidded about would they be done by July fourth. No, I'm not kidding. This is being May first, uh, we have two more months, and I realize the weather's bad some days, but, uh, anyway, glad you're staying on top of that and keeping informed because they need to get done and remove ten thousand cones from our streets, and, anyway.
Looks like they're moving along, they're working on the weather's needs and that. Anything else for Mike? Anyone have anything for Mike? Jesse?
N- I have nothing going on tonight.
Just want Mike to mention Dare Graduation next week?
Yes, sir, next Thursday, councils welcome to the Dare Graduation, Officer Covert will have it next Thursday, that would be the...
What?
Eighth?
Eighth, yeah.
Eighth?
No, ninth.
Ninth, excuse me, ninth, we'll get it figured out here, at two P M. at the West Burlington Elementary, uh, gymnasium there, the elementary school, so, I think he had about fifty-five or sixty kids, I think, this year, so...
Pretty good sized class.
Pretty good class.
Do I have anything for Jess? Sean?
On the building side, it's May first, starting all over again, um, all caught up with the inspections, so worked to get them back into a good routine rotation. Um, one note to renters and landlords, um, I had a couple that I went into that they just need to work on their cleanliness, uh, keeping their food picked up and, and the like, um, that's part of our, our rental agreements in getting your license. On the fire side, uh, we were supposed to have the hose tested on Monday, uh, the idea is to have the water on the inside, not on the outside, so with the rain and everything, they didn't come and test, but they gave us opportunity, Southeast Iowa came in and got the garage door openers in and installed, they just have to come back and put in the, uh, red light, green light that's gonna be mounted on the outside, uh, let the drivers know when it's safe to back up, and if it's not. Uh, we also had two firefighters, uh, myself and another seasoned firefighter took over to Mount Pleasant on Sunday, got them through the, uh, State Training Bureau's burn trailer, uh, so they're good to go, and Saturday night and Sunday last week, um, our two newest firefighters, Hunter Harstock and Sal, I'm not gonna try and murder his last name, uh, those guys were both seniors in high school, they were involved in the play up there, and a couple of our guys went up and supported them, and it was a good play, it really was, the students up at the high school did a great job.
Do I have anything for Sean?
I have one thing, Sean, for that, that house we talked about, that three-ten Swan, where are you at in getting that, getting something done with that?
He was...
You tell me, the guy was in Florida or something?
That's the one, the homeowner's a trucker, he travels back and forth, he's worked on cleaning it up, um, when he comes back into town, he normally contacts me, um, they had, uh, some issues in there, and the last time I was in there, he had addressed most of those issues, he still had a couple as far as like, uh, a flooring issue, but he hasn't been back in, he should be coming back, I would say, within the month, usually during the winter months, he's, he keeps his trucking route to the south.
Does he have like a timeframe to get this complete, 'cause we're almost three years?
It's the interior of a house that he personally owns, so there's really not a, we can't press a timeframe on him, he doesn't necessarily live there, as long as he keeps the outside up, it's no different than any other homeowner.
Is that the one that Jeremy Price had, flipped?
No, no.
Is that the one next door to him?
No, um...
Three-ten Swan?
That one is over...
That was a four...
It's over on Winter, um, and actually Sergeant Melson owns that one, and he's working on that one, I mentioned on him today, where he's at with it.
Oh, okay. Anything else for Sean?
Um, at this time, I'm going to, uh, I wanna introduce a couple of gentlemen, and you all know Cindy Franciscovich, um, Dan Wood, he's the state fire marshal, and, uh, Stephen Baines, he's the, uh, new commissioner for the public safety, Iowa State Commissioner, and they have something to present, I believe. Gentlemen?
Mayor, City Council, Chief Logan, Chief Ryan, it happens today, it is, it is an honor to be here, it is an odd, um, it's not a situation to be, um, it, it's equal part sad, um, and equal part, I mean, it's an honor, um, if you wanna, uh...
It's one of the most important pieces of my job, uh, and quite frankly, it's a piece of the job that I really value, and it's very important to be, to be able to do this. And the reason why in large part is my father was a police officer, um, I come from a family of first responders, my uncle was a fireman, um, and so to be in these positions and to have this opportunity and this honor, um, really strikes home for me personally, and it's incredibly personal, uh, a little bit emotional for me whenever I do it, so bear with me, um, but it is a situation where it is, it truly is an honor, um, to recognize first responders, that, to recognize those people that are willing to kinda stand, uh, and be that bridge between chaos and order, uh, to keep people safe, uh, to ensure the safety of others selflessly, uh, and that is something that, that James did, uh, he did that selflessly, uh, he did it as a volunteer, uh, which is even, uh, more powerful. If this was not his job, it was a calling, it was a calling that he elected to do, that he volunteered to do, and ultimately died as a result of that, and so, uh, it is an extremely distinct honor to be here, um, to recognize James, to recognize Cindy and, and the family, and to, uh, say on behalf of the state of Iowa, thank you, uh, thank you for allowing James to answer that call, uh, thank you for supporting him, uh, in, in volunteering to do what he did, uh, and so on behalf of the state of Iowa, on behalf of the Iowa Department of Public Safety, and Governor Ken Reynolds, um, it's my distinct pleasure to, uh, present to Cindy Franciscovich, uh, the death benefit in the amount of hundred thousand dollars, uh, for the line of duty death of her husband James. Thank you Cindy, and that was it.
Can I get a picture of him, please?
We might get a little more picture.
Your spirit report probably has better camera.
But you have a better angle.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, thank you. Um, Haley and I do have a couple requests, uh, we went to town and, we said, um, we'd like to see if we can open him saying, we've had asked several times to get it open.
Open his thing, what thing?
His, um, uniform thing, so we can get pictures done.
The locker?
Yeah, 'cause we have asked several times, and everybody tells us we can't open it, we, we will pay to have it redone, 'cause pictures...
I said I'd open it the one time, but...
No, we were told, no, we were told...
Get with me, we'll get it opened up, and you can...
Because we wanted to get pictures with the kids, and asked one more time, because, I know we had to close it early because of July fourth, but we had asked several, several times, and everybody told us, no, 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 we can't open it, and we had offered to pay forward to get redone, and the other request we have, and we just feel like we've been left out, like the fire department doesn't see us anymore, or don't want anything to do about it, we just feel like we were being left out.
That's not the case.
Like you've gone, and you've been left out.
That's not the case, Cindy.
That's how we feel, definitely.
But I can understand that, um, at the same time, I'll take away...
You know, when you pass the way, you're thinking, what is that, you may roll, you be there, but it doesn't seem like...
Well, I will say this, um, when you go through the line of duty death, one of the, the guidelines that's listed out by the federal, um, thing, I explained this to the firefighters, and some of them made promises to you, some of them made comments, saying if you ever need anything, give them a call, and they'll be there, um, and some of us didn't say that, because when they advise you, you know, don't make promises you can't keep, that's one of the things they say to me, um, I would ask that you hold those firefighters who made those comments to you, those statements to you, hold them accountable to what they stated they would do, um, our doors are always open to you, you know, I made, made that comment, and I still stand by it, and we'll get the photographs taken care of, we'll get the photographs taken care of, I mean, you stopped up there numerous times, after, you know, after everything...
Yeah, like the funeral ones, I've never gotten, I've asked to start applying the form...
The photographs?
Yeah.
I gave that phone drive to you guys.
No, I never got it.
I gave it, I gave the phone drive over.
No, I never got it.
So I'll get another copy of it, maybe get you a copy.
Yeah, I never got it, and it came wrong.
Cindy, why don't you come in? Just give it to me, and we'll take care of it.
And get with Sean, and get this all straightened out, and I'm sorry that you feel that way, and I'm sorry that you're in that position, uh, but we'll get it, we'll get it straightened out. And, you know, personally speaking, I don't wanna have to ever go through another firefighter's death again, this is the third, this is the third one that, you know, I've been involved with, and, uh, it's a tragedy for the whole community, you know, not just to the family, but it's tr- there's two, three different families, you know, that are, that are affected, uh, your family, you know, the community, the family, the fire, the firefighter family, you know, it's, it, and it'll never go away, you know, you think about it, and I, and I'm sorry that, you know, you had to bring that up, so, but we'll get this straightened out, and thank you very much, gentlemen, for being attentive tonight, thank you.
So, uh, Rod, you got anything to report?
Let me mention these raffle tickets one more time, I mentioned them last week, they are available at City Hall now, if you have a church group, a baseball team, some kind of a fundraiser, if you'll sell these for us, tickets are two dollars a piece, we'll refund you back a dollar a piece for just selling these for us at the end of the, uh, Fourth of July, it's a great, easy fundraiser, people will buy these, all you gotta do is ask them. Uh, of course, we will celebrate Fourth of July, getting on the Fourth of July, which is a Thursday this year, just so that you know, I'd put in for Friday off right now, if I was you. We did, uh, have to switch bands, I've been saying since last year, we'd have the Blues Brothers this year, 'cause I plan on this being my last year running this event, however, the Blues Brothers have canceled on us, uh, one of the two main guys has moved to Florida, and they're apologizing and getting out of their contract and offering to play next year for half price, and I told them that didn't really do any good, so anyway, I did, I did just send Leslie a, a copy of a contract for a band that we just hired called Platinum Rock Legends, it's a multi-piece group with four lead male singers, I think you'll all enjoy them, the, the lead singers dress in costume to look like as close as they can to the person they're singing the song with, so they have Prince costumes and Michael Jackson costumes, and, anyway, so I think they'll be fun, I think they'll be entertaining, not just, you know, four or five guys standing there singing songs, so, yeah, we are moving fastly forward, or slowly forward, actually, but anyway, we'll have another nice event for you on the Fourth of July.
Rick, you got anything?
No, sir.
Yes, sir. Kelly, you got anything on that, Leslie?
The budget hearing next week, amendment, the player buddy got the mail he sent out, the budget hearing for the amendment, it's next week, I mean, next county.
Next council, okay, yeah, yeah.
Hopefully everybody got that, and got a chance to look at it.
All right, we got one other community report, and that's an update from Southeast Iowa Regional Airport, Harry, Mick, and Charlie are here.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me here today, um... Nope, no, I'm, no, pretty, pretty informal here tonight, so, um, so really, the reason I'm here tonight is really to ask y'all for your help in protecting the public investment of the airport by updating our airport zoning regulations and our airport land use, um, this is really just something that's really need, needed to take place for a long time, so we finally got a plan together to, to move forward on this, but one thing that happens when someone calls me and asks me about what can they build around the airport, could I put a church here, how tall can the steeple be, all of those types of questions, there's a lot of things that I take into consideration, well, the first thing that pops into my mind is this map, and this is the airport overlay zones, um, there are imaginary services above the airport that we pay attention to, and West Burlington's actually over here in this corner, so it's really encompassed most of, um, more of Burlington, all of Des Moines County, it even goes to Lee County, and also over into Illinois some, so all of those surfaces, if they're not protected, could cause a problem for the airport, so we're just looking to, to, um, improve our procedure there, and then I go to the Des Moines County G I S website, which is great, what it shows me is actually, it shows me the airport-owned property, but I really need more information than that, then I'd go to the airport master plan, and then I look at that, and I say, okay, is, do we own an easement over that piece of property, if we own an easement, then, then we have to see what that easement says, and then I go to Burlington City Code, and what that tells me is, is it references a map from nineteen forty-six, so that's a long time ago, there's been a lot of changes, a lot of terminology changes, um, so we'd just like to get that updated, so what we did is we put together, um, we had, held a meeting with all of the planning departments from each community, so Des Moines County, West Burlington, and Burlington, and we all sat down together, and we said, okay, how can we come together and, and make this happen, how can we get the zoning updated a- across all of, all of the entities, so, a couple of recommendations came out of that, and one thing was that it's, the zoning becomes pretty simple to read, we wanted to make it as easy and user-friendly as we can, and then also have some mapping updated appropriately, so it's a little bit easier for everybody to, to understand, so, the other thing was, let's form a committee, and let's everybody come together two or three or four times, and decide what each community needs and what's going to make sense, so, um, the good news of all of this is that we have applied for a grant from the Iowa D O T, it's a thirty thousand dollar grant for a five thousand dollar match for the airport, and we are willing to take on that, that match dollar, but the caveat to that is until we actually, um, pass some zoning ordinances, we will not be reimbursed for that, so it's very important that if we start down this path, that we see this project through to the end, um, so, we want to, to form this committee, and I'm here really tonight to ask for, one, your support, that we move forward with this plan, and to maybe have a couple people sit on the committee with us, and then also, um, if you have any input or any suggestions into, to this process, we're certainly willing to listen to that, so, just a little simple update on what's going on, and those were my asks, so.
Kelly? You want me on that committee?
We talked about that. I love your volunteerism.
I actually went to the very, to the, the meeting we had, and I...
Both Kelly and I went to that meeting, yeah, I was hoping you weren't gonna go through all of that again.
No.
It's very complicated, but...
It, it is pretty complicated, it is, and it will take some time.
I'm, that's fine, I...
Well, maybe Sean, like, he's building inspector and stuff, and...
I'll do what you tell me to, Hans.
That's the spirit.
I think you got two volunteers.
All right, fantastic, thanks so much for that.
Alternate, yeah, doing an alternate, perfect.
But, I mean, our, our zoning pretty much controls what the height limitations are that we can build here in, in town, I don't know about the others, if Burlington has that, or, or the county has anything like that.
And as we drill down into that, it, it may, it may take care of that height requirement, 'cause of course, as you go, the further you go out from the runway, the higher it becomes, so we'll just have to look at that.
I think it does, but the caveat with that is, is yet, we have to all pass that overlay, even if it doesn't apply, we have to pass that overlay, it probably won't mean anything to us, but in order for them to get reimbursed, we have to pass that overlay, it, I think most cases, it's way above what we already regulate, so it won't affect us, but we will have to formally pass that.
Very good.
I appreciate you keeping us up.
Okay, good, I do have one more, uh, one more thing I'd like to add and talk to you about here tonight, the last time I was here, Councilman Crowner asked me about some of the businesses that actually utilize the airport, so, was kinda fun, an activity that we did, we had the F B O involved, and we, we took a look at our landings, so, we looked only at landings for this, this exercise, so there were about eight hundred landings last year, and of those, fifty, forty-eight to fifty, um, companies within the region utilize were within that eight hundred landings, uh, twenty-five percent of those landings was by aircraft that were owned by an L L C, or a NetJet, something like that, so it's really hard for us to say who that is, but just from knowing those people that are walking through the door, I can tell you that most of those are company-related, and if we look just into West Burlington, um, the car dealerships obviously use, use the airport, the major retailers here, Menards, Target, Walmart, all those folks, um, some bordering manufacturing firms as well, Shears, Modern Welding, G E, all of those folks, and the last year have used the airport, so, just wanted to give you that little bit of an update, and hopefully that helped answer your questions.
And I think my real suggestion, Mary, was that you all need to have that on some kind of, and I know you're worried about privacy issues, but that needs to be somehow on a, on a handout, or a paper, or an informational, when you do your little slide shows and your, you know, I really think that information ought to be, uh, available or showed to new council members and taxpayers, saying, you know, matter of fact, these are local businesses that do use your airport, and again, as I, as I said, I, I've supported airports since day one, but you're gonna have a, a pretty new council in West Burlington coming up pretty soon, I think, and, and I just worry about those people being able to defend that contribution that we make, and be able to say, well, actually, this guy, and this guy, and this guy, and this girl, and, you know, so that's all.
Yep, no, absolutely, it was a great...
So that's great, I'm glad you're looking into that and trying to put some actual names to those, to those...
It was really a fun activity for us to do, and, and you're right, we should do that more often and include that, and so we will in the future, so thanks for that suggestion.
I think, I just think it could be helpful to, to, not only to you, but to, to future councils.
Sure.
Okay, thanks, Mary.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, appreciate your help.
Thanks, Charlie, thanks, Beck. All right, anyone wishing to address council matters other than out on the agenda tonight? Hey, we're building new business, item number one is to consider approval of a tentative agreement with the Public Works Bargaining Unit, which, uh, we had mediation on Monday, and through mediate, no, that, I'm sorry, mediation was with, uh...
Police.
With police, Public Works settled a couple of weeks ago, and it's a five-year agreement, uh, two point five percent increase in wages each year, with the, uh, year four and five agreed upon to be able to be o-
On, on Dan's memo, I see that he says once a week pickup thirteen twenty-five, that's the revenue, the, the cost is thirteen seventeen, isn't it, Dan?
Third, what?
The cost is thirteen seventeen, you got thirteen twenty-five in your memo, that's a revenue, that's what we, we charge our customers. I just wanna point that out, contracts, for the first year is thirteen seventeen.
Oh, the other eight cents is the administrative fee.
It, it spelled out on put, in page, one page of the contract, the static price is, uh, on page four, thirteen seventeen the first year, and assuming no increase in tippings, thirteen thirty-five the second year, and thirteen fifty-four the third year, for once a week pickup.
So they're gonna do away with the twice a week then?
They proposed it, for once a week, that's the cost.
I won't, I won't vote for that, but you all do what you want.
In his memo, they want to increase it a dollar, right now we're paying twelve seventeen, that's why it would go to thirteen seventeen, but if you want twice a week, they want two dollar and fifty, two dollars and fifty cents increase, as Dan states in his memo.
They want that increase just during the months they're doing, doing it twice, or they want that all the time, 'cause that makes no sense?
Yeah.
Maybe we'd all have Dennis come in, answer your questions, because Hans is asking questions that I couldn't answer from talking to him, and, and if you guys all have questions, maybe we oughta have Dennis come in between... I think our citizens are spoiled, and I'm not gonna sit here tonight and vote to go to once a week garbage pickup during the summer, myself, that, that's been twice a week since forever. They gave us a price for twice a week, but I, I understand it doesn't make a lot of sense, and I know Dennis talked to me, and he's got, uh, when it, they run around with that truck now, they don't see what's in it, so they pick up every can, whether it's empty or not empty, and, and so that was some of his reasoning, but I think you gotta hear it from him, so I'll get ahold of him and have him come in for the next meeting, and he can explain what he, what he wants and what his position is, 'cause otherwise it'll, it'll get messy with going between you and me and him, and back and forth, and he might as well just come here and answer questions, so maybe table this?
Table without table, but...
Yeah, second.
Uh, I think we don't even need a motion or a second table, we'll just table it. Okay, item number three is to consider appointing a Lursa Connor to serve on a planning and zoning commission.
Motion to approve?
Support.
Motion for support, any discussion? Motion with support and any discussion? Roll call.
Lees?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Knight Meyer?
Aye.
Motion carrying. Item number four is to consider resolution approving 28 agreement with DESCOM. And Shayna's here, if you guys have any questions on it. It's just basically the same agreement as what we've had in place, other than adding Middletown and Minneapolis to the equation and going from five representatives to seven representatives with Burlington having three votes, West Burlington having one vote, the county having a vote, a vote, and then a rotating vote between Danville, Middletown, and Minneapolis. And the formula is based off of population and a percentage of the population. And what that would amount to would be the DESCOM's yearly budget. Any questions?
Are you our director on that, Hans?
Yes.
You're okay with this?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? I will make the comment though that I still believe that there should be a countywide levy to support DESCOM. But we can't seem to move off a dead center on that. And I'll continue to work on that. I know the city of Burlington, the representatives, they would also like to see that happen. So we just need to continue working with the supervisors to get that done. Roll call.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Knight Meyer?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Motion carrying. Thanks Shayna for being here. Item number five is consider payments to our associates for engineering services related to the Gear Avenue Trail Project in the amount of $29,179.15.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Knight Meyer?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Motion carrying. Item number six is to consider appointing Mike Brissy as the acting Public Works Director.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion?
Too bad.
Should have left if you didn't want it.
Roll call.
Knight Meyer?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Thank you for accepting that, Mike.
I didn't, I can't scroll through fast enough, but, but, uh, I'll probably have to do this the next time. Because we're going to have to probably sit down and do something about Mike's wages, like we did with Jess. So for the next time, come up with something as far as, I don't think you want to do it for nothing, do you?
I'm pretty easy.
Okay. Well, we'll sit down with Dan and you and Dan can sit down together and hash out something. Ready? Item number seven is, oh, did we vote?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Item number seven is consider resolution approving the sale of a smartphone for an amount of $254.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Lees?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Knight Meyer?
Aye.
Motion carrying. Item number eight is consider resolution hiring Sam Brissy for seasonal labor in the Public Works Department.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion?
This gives us two.
Two.
Is that correct? Two workers?
Yes.
Roll call.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Knight Meyer?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Motion carrying. All right, item number nine is to consider the first reading ordinance setting the sewer rates for fiscal 1920, which monthly minimum charge would go from 860 to 920 per user unit. And the monthly meter charge would be going from 940 to 1006 per thousand gallons. The capital project charge is still a dollar per user unit.
So move.
Support. Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Knight Meyer?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Carrying. Item number 10 is to consider first reading ordinance setting the water rates for fiscal year 1920. And that would be, do you see the changes? Where the monthly distribution charge would go from 2125 to $22. The first 3,000, no charge with payment of monthly distribution charge. 3,000, 1 million gallons used per month would be going from 740 to 765 per thousand gallons. The next 500,000 gallons used per month is going from 514 to 539 per thousand gallons. And all water over 1,500,001 gallons would go from 319 to 344.
So move. Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Knight Meyer?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Motion carrying. Item number 11 is consider first reading ordinance setting the recycling rates for fiscal 2019, 2020. And recycling rate would go from 375 to 385 per month.
So move. Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? We, the other day, the finance committee at the recycling center met and we, we kind of talked about this here. Because if you remember, this rate is actually split like 80% pays for the recycling part and 20% pays for, I mean, this is like an internal thing that they do. 20% pays for the HASCAM Center. And we were kind of kicking around the idea of, you know, eventually, when is this going to end, this 10 cent increase per year? And it would depend on how that is changed internally then over there with the financing. But one of these days, there might be relief on this thing. Roll call.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Knight Meyer?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Motion carrying. The next thing is, well, I suppose we need to table that. So we'll just table item number 12.
I make a motion to table it.
Don't really need a motion.
Yeah, that's all right.
Tabled. Anybody have any old business?
I'll ask one, are they going to continue to go to two right at the moment? Because they advertised a going twice a week right now.
Until, it's, it's till July 1st.
July 1st, right.
What the contract says right now. Or June 30th. Anyone wishing to address council matters, we did discuss or didn't discuss tonight. entertain a motion adjourned.
Remove.
A little favor.
Aye.
Adjourned, thank you.